City Council meeting to order. If anyone has a cellphone, go ahead and put it on vibrate or mute right now. Please, thank you. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of proclamations tonight, and our city manager, Gary Jackson, will lead those for us.
I would like to ask Chief Burnett, first to come up, Fire Chief Burnett. Scott, if you'll join me, please. And I would also like to invite his command staff folks that are here for him to also come up with, be with him if you would like. The highest honor bestowed by the North Carolina Association of Fire Chiefs is the annual awards that they present for Career Fire Chief of the Year. They also provide a volunteer fire department Chief of the Year award, and I'm going to turn it over when we're done with this to Mr. Jerry Vehan to introduce the recipient of that award, also of Buncombe County, that we want to recognize. But front and center, want to recognize Scott Burnett, as you may know, was selected as the Fire Chief of the Year in the state of North Carolina, and this is the highest esteemed honor that the fire chief's profession in the state can bestow upon one of its members. I'm sure his entire team will tell you that Scott is a humble man, but over the last few years in this role, he's stood to the challenges and he's made all of them and all of us better. You saw that two weeks ago when we had the storm events, the team led us through this, and we're going to recognize some other folks as well. Scott was out of town and knew that it would be in good hands and carry forward. Scott has continued to further the professional development in the department, look for opportunities to develop skills, have weathered the tragedies, as you know, with Captain Jeff, and we're just really proud of the work that he's put together, and we're all stronger because of that. So hats off to you, Scott, and congratulations to everybody who contributed as member of the team. Scott, do you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Certainly appreciate, and Mayor and council, thank you very much for this proclamation and recognition. It makes it extremely easy to be a fire chief in this city with outstanding leadership from our elected officials, our city manager, and all of the City of Asheville staff. It really says very little about Scott Burnett and says very much about the City of Asheville. What makes it easiest to be a fire chief in this city is our firefighters, without question. They are what make the Asheville Fire Department and provide service to our citizens every single day. So, thank you very much.
Scott, if you'll stay up here with me. I would like to call up Buncombe County Emergency Management Coordinator Jerry Vehan, and he wants to make an introduction as well.
We knew we'd get you at one of our meetings. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council, Gary. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to be here today also, and we have, as you know, a chief from the county, from the volunteer side, that won the Volunteer Chief of the Year award, and to my knowledge, this is the first time since, I believe, the North Carolina Fireman Chief, Fire Chief Association's been there since 1932, somewhere along in there. First time that the career chief and the volunteer chief of the year have come from the same counties. And this time, I'd like to call up Jeff Justice from Rems Creek Fire Department, and while he's coming up here, I'll tell you a little bit about him. He's not going to tell you much about himself, but he has spent the last 30 years as one of our paramedics in Buncombe County, and he's one of our operational supervisors, very much a part of my team with the county. And Jeff is very active in his community and with the Fire Chiefs, Firefighters Associations in Buncombe County. And both of these gentlemen, Scott and Jeff, have played a pivotal role in the development of our public safety training facility, and it's something that we're all proud of, and I think we're extremely fortunate to have Jeff and Scott. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to Gary.
I would never miss a chance to speak publicly. I've got a little bit of politician in me as well. Thank you, Ms. Mayor and the council. I do appreciate this greatly. I've got a head cold, and I apologize that you're not able to hear me too well. As I've said before, we depend so much on Scott and his team to help us. We help you cover the Beaver Dam Valley with the Rems Creek Department, and there's 20 other chiefs here in Buncombe County that are fire chiefs that could have got the same award. We really are blessed with the emergency services we have in Buncombe and Asheville. We have that because we've got good leaders, both from your side and from our side, and Scott leads the way for us, so I can't give him enough credit. You know, I feel very fortunate to have gotten this award, but many people helped me along the way to get to where I'm at, so thank you very much.
Let me just say one more thing. Chief Justice mentioned this, but we are very, very pleased to have the partnership with Rems Creek. The coverage in Beaver Dam is an economic benefit to both, and so it's this kind of put together. Chief Justice, you probably had a thing to do with putting this together. We really appreciate you working with Chief Grayson at the time, and it really is a model of how we should be working in the city and the county to provide the very best public safety services regardless of what those boundaries are. So with that, we'll thank the chiefs, and the next thing I'd like to do is recognize folks for their response during the storm. How many inches did we get, Jerry? 16 inches in Asheville, and it varied more there. So I will just release these two gentlemen and say that when it comes to those kind of situations, we set up our emergency command post. So the first person I want to recognize for that is Mr. Vehan for working closely with us, sharing with us what the conditions are, and advising us how things are progressing on a statewide basis, and giving us a direct pipeline to the decisions that are being made in Raleigh from the governor's office. So thank you, Mr. Vehan, for working as closely with us as you ever have. And our emergency coordinator, and the person who's responsible for making sure, it starts at the top, is Chief Burnett. So I'm going to take this opportunity to recognize our employees and our departments, which worked so effectively during the entire winter storm period, but specifically in our most recent weather event. And I mentioned Scott Burnett. On the point, as I indicated this time around, was the next in command. In this case, it was, and if you'll stand as I mention your name, I'm going to miss some people, but I do want those people that are here to stand and be recognized in the audience. And so that first person I would like to recognize is Deputy Chief Mike Nicely. Chief Nicely spent the night at the EEOC, and I don't think he slept much in the cot, but he was our constant person who kept us all informed and across with Buncombe County, with the other departments, and was a real asset to all of us. Now, if you'll hold your applause to the end, I'm going to mention quite a few folks here. Also staffing the command post, when Chief Nicely stepped down, we really appreciated Division Chief Joseph Meadows, the Fire Department, Battalion Chief Darren McElreith, Battalion Chief Daniel Flynn, PIO Kelly Clope, Engineer Jared Williams, Engineer Eric Stolt, and Senior Specialist Louis Garrison from the Fire Department. Thanks very much to everybody in the Fire Department. And I know I left somebody out, and so I apologize. Public Works Department, on point, leading the crews, getting things done out there on the street, Greg Schuler, if you'll stand, please, Greg. Tommy Carver, Brian Apajay, Jonathan Coats, Brad Hunter, Lynn Harden, Tim Bayless, Naim Akbar, Alisa McLaughlin. These are your folks that work 12-hour shifts and were your get-or-done people right out there in the front lines. Thank you very much. It doesn't run if the trucks aren't well-equipped, right? So I think sometimes we neglect to mention the people behind the scenes that make everything run and go smoothly. Fleet Services Division has had a key role in the preparedness of our field operations, and so I want to recognize this as well. The Director of General Services, I'll start with Eric Hagan. Fleet Services Manager, Mark Stevens, Kevin Hockenberry, Frank Gunter, Charles Redman, Darrell Rice, John Walker, Joseph Edwards, Katoia Owens, Randy Schuler, Rob Martin, Stephanie Parker, Terry Rogers, Thomas Houston, Tyler Austin, and William Hoder. Want to give them a round of applause if we could, please. Traffic Services, keeping an eye on the intersections and conditions there. You know, sometimes we have to actually literally close down entire intersections due to the conditions and redirect traffic. Also, they're responsible for the excellent programs like the one to move traffic and parking off of the street and into the parking garages that worked very well for us and allowed us to move that process along. Recognizing from the Transportation Department, Jeff Moore, Interim Director, Dean Grayson, and Rob Durling. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Communications and public engagement, keeping the news and the information supplied to management, council, as well as posting an incredible amount of information this time. And I think probably the thing that we're most proud of this time around with that office's operation were the special efforts they made through Facebook and other social media to tell the story of the people that you're meeting here tonight and the work that they did. And I know that their families appreciated seeing them recognized on Facebook and places like that. So thank you for the innovation creativity. The office, the division manager is Dawil Hitch, Brian Postel, Dan Ferris, and Marcia Stickford. If we can congratulate them, please. And I'll tell you what, most important thing, and there were limited a number of opportunities to recognize their efforts, but our Asheville Police Department, we can always count on them. They respond no matter what the conditions are, whether it's a storm or whether it's 24/7 every day of the week, but their efforts were incredible during this. And for that reason, I'm not going to single out anybody other than Deputy Chief Wade Wood and Captain Tinsplaine, who were at the EEO's Emergency Operation Command Post. But I also had some nice special time with Sergeant Jamie Crawford, so I want to do a shout-out for Jamie as well. She was there constantly. So we'll give them all a hand, if you will. Mayor, our work is, and council, our work is not done. We're prepared in case of another winter storm event, should one come tomorrow or the day after that or throughout the rest of the season. So thank you for giving us this opportunity to put some faces with the names of the people that are doing such great work.
And before we move on, we want to also extend some thanks from all of us, to Gary, to you and your direct team, Mike Morgan, and Kathy Ball, I'm not sure if Kathy's here, and Ken Putnam, the leadership team, and your efforts on these issues. I got several compliments from folks about things getting cleared, and it seemed like things went really smoothly, and I know it's because you all prepared very well in advance.
Thank you.
In fact, CNN contacted us to do an interview about the snowstorm, and then they called us back and said, "Well, you guys really aren't having that much trouble, so we're going to go find another story." So, well, that's the truth. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'll let, I know, I was wondering, we had so many people here, I thought, wow, that's a really, you want to talk about the Avalon, or what? If council doesn't mind, we're going to, if we pull off Item D, the Greenway, to do that one separately, just so we can have a moment to talk about its significance, not due to any controversy. That would be great. Mr. Walls, I see you there in the audience, so we'll hang on to that one. Is there any other item on the consent agenda that you all would like to have considered separately? All right. Any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda, except for Item D.
Second. All right. Anyone here wishing to make comment on the motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item D? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. So Item D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding to accept a donation of 48 acres of real property at 98 DeSota Street from Duke Energy Progress and enter into a construction and maintenance agreement for joint storm water improvements. This is a really exciting partnership, and we just wanted to take a moment to highlight it. The city is going to receive, probably not, the transaction won't be completed maybe for a year, but receive this stretch of land down on the river, and the city will be able to put in a Greenway, which is really exciting to help fill out our Greenway master plan and a great partnership with Duke Energy. And I see Jason Walls with Duke Energy here, and if you want to take a moment to say something, we're in a celebratory mood on this one, so please come forward.
Mayor, members of council, just real quick for the record, it's been a real pleasure to work with city staff, to really talk about the vision of the river and to be a part of what the city really wants on that side of the river. And we're an excited partner. There's a lot of details yet to be worked out, but we're excited to go on this journey and see where it leads. But it's going to be, it's going to be real exciting to see people using that side of the river and see it cleaned up.
Great, thanks. Do I have a, oh, Gary, please.
Yes, there have been some questions about where we would move forward with this. This creates a foundation framework. There would need to be design work. Of course, we work most closely with the associated neighborhood and other users of the potential Greenway in the public space. We want to be very transparent in the training and the planning process and allowing neighbors and people who would connect with it to be very familiar with those plans. We haven't got a final plan for this. We do have the capability to launch that planning process after we engage the design professional to do that and put together a community involvement process. We'd also want to work closely with the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, with Riverlink, and key property owners in that area as well. But we are really appreciative of Duke Progress Energy agreeing to work with us and the community and move forward on this.
I just want to say thank you so much for the land. I'm really excited about the opportunity, and I know the city's going to work hard with Duke on locate, on helping you locate utility substations. Just want to remind you to continue with your work with the major employers and the major energy users of the city so that we don't have to build too many more substations. But thanks so much.
But we don't all love substations? No?
And I also wanted to mention that thanks to Duke, and Jason, thanks for being here tonight, there's already a community group that's sprung up around this that's ready to volunteer and put their backs into it to get this thing up and running, and there were community members involved in the process up until now as well, and so I just wanted to acknowledge those people.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion. To approve? A second? Anyone?
Item nine.
I need a second. She made the motion. Okay. All right. And actually, if there's anyone else here that would like to make a comment on this item, you can, you can do so at this time. All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. All right, we have an addition under the presentations and reports. We're going to hear the quarterly report, but first, we're going to hear an update on the Hominy Creek spill that some of you may have heard about that happened recently in, just outside the city limits in West Asheville. And I have that Chief Burnett is doing this, but I, do you see Chief Burnett here? You told him he could go, I think.
I think he took me literally.
Well, why don't we move that one second and do the quarterly report and see if we can't get that queued up so we can hear about that, the update on the Hominy Creek spill.
Mike's prepared to do it.
Oh, well, there we go. On the quarterly report, okay. Yes, I have Mike down for the strategic operating plan under the quarterly report. Okay. We thought you could pitch it on just about anything. No?
They did a super job with it, too. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to give you a midway-year report on your strategic planning process. The documents was attached to your staff report. We'll be glad to go over all 32 pages of that document, or we can hit the highlights tonight, and that's what we're prepared to move forward with. The full report can be found on the town's website, so citizens and residents can go to the website and pick it up. What do we want for our city? And we want Asheville to be a place where, one, jobs are created and there's a long-term financial stability; two, people can afford to live; and three, people enjoy a high quality of life. The long-term goals go beyond just the everyday basic services that the city provides. We want to make sure that Asheville remain physically healthy and grow through strategic infill development. Our vision for the future is to invest in key target areas for job growth, economic development, and with special emphasis on sustaining downtown and riverfront redevelopment. For this reason, in the 2013-2014 budget, as adopted by the city council, launched the Economic Development Capital Improvement Program to finance an estimated $60 million over the next five years. 2.2 million of the, for the Economic Development Capital Improvement Plan will be provided as seed money for programs that include cornerstone projects like the River Arts District Improvement Project, multimodal pedestrian improvement projects, transformational affordable housing developments, and ensure funding for critical capital maintenance like streets and sidewalks. We're excited to have the Craven Street improvements and the New Belgium Construction that is in the final stages of planning and design. Construction is anticipated to begin in the spring 2014. Currently, site work is being done on that location now. This private-public investment planned as part of the New Belgium Brewing Expansion will create 130 jobs in our region that will pay over the average wage. Cleanup of an adopted brownfield site, and also be supporting our region's growing craft brewing cluster developments. Improve infrastructure in a way that will support other area businesses, water and transportation needs, and enhance storm water mitigation and improve the water quality of the French Broad River. Provide needed multimodal linkage to the city's adopted transportation plans. The Haywood Street Vision Plan. The Haywood Street, Haywood Road Vision Plan focused on 2.5 miles stretched from the French Broad River up to Patton Avenue. The plan developed over a number of years has been a comprehensive effort of residents, businesses, property owners, and city staff to lay the groundwork for six community-identified priorities: transportation in streetscape, historic preservation, zoning and land use, economic development, safety of neighborhood issues. The plan was reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Committee and will be presented to you tonight for final approval. Systems improvements. The Enhanced Development Service Department System offers online scheduling and inspections, online trade permits, and searchable access to online data, permit data. Provide better customer service to department, excuse me, to the developmental community. Our waste stations that we're working on for the downtown area will be replacing 140 trash containers, and they'll be upgraded to 165 waste stations across the downtown area. Waste stations will include garbage and recycling collection, as well as cigarette ashtrays, pet waste bag dispensers. Cost to the city's $175,000 for this project. Contracts for the units have been awarded, and the contract for installation has not been yet awarded, but we expect that to take place in April, and installation beginning in April for our downtown businesses and residents. Also, the parking pass program has increased parking meter revenues by 6% plus. First hour is free, reminding everyone in our parking garages, and that helped 155,000 visitors annually. The CR codes on parking meters provide information about restaurants, hotels, parking, transit, and events. A partnership with the Chamber of Commerce helped make that possible. Affordable housing. Through 2013-14, that fiscal year, we were able to fund 303 units. We've also helped 439 households with residential assistance. This is one of our continuing goals and projects that we have. SOCOM tournament. The U.S. Savior Center continues to involve and make upgrades to improve the downtown Asheville's largest entertainment venue. Already, the U.S. Savior Center has more made strides in attracting big-name acts and sports. Sold-out like the annual Christmas jam continues to garner national attention, while the Southern Conference Basketball Tournament recently announced that it would continue to take place here through 2017 season. In 2013, the Southern Conference Basketball Tournament had an attendance of almost 30,000 individuals and brought an estimated economic impact to the community of $4 million. Remind you that this tournament will begin March the 7th through the 11th of this year, and my understanding is hotel rooms are already sold out, and we're looking forward to a great tournament. Finally, our APD strategic planning process. APD has been working with Dolan Consulting Group to develop a APD has been working with Dolan Consulting Group to develop a three-year strategic plan. Meetings have involved all APD personnel, City of Asheville Department Directors, and other staff, local law enforcement, and public safety agency partners, community groups, and the city's police, excuse me, Police Citizen Advisory Committee. Feedback was compiled, and consultants were able to identify six focus areas around which they would create the Asheville Police Department Strategic Plan for 2014-17. Those six areas are listed: recruitment and retention, leadership, outreach and communication, equipment, technology, community quality of life, and organizational structure. We hope to have this plan to the council in April or possibly May of this year. That completes my, my report. I'd like to thank the council for this allow us to do this abbreviated version of the mid-year report, and remind everyone that the full report is available online at the city's webpage. Thank you.
All right. Are we going to have Tony McDowell go ahead and do the financial?
Yeah.
Gwen's question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tony McDowell, City's Budget Manager. We have for you tonight the second quarter financial report. The full report is contained in your packet, your agenda packet. It's a 15-page report that reports on our budget and actual expenditures to date through December 31st. The report has all the city's operating funds, the general fund, as well as all the enterprise funds, and also reports on some of our major active capital projects at this point. And be happy to answer any questions you may have about the full report. I do have a brief presentation to summarize some of that information for you. And our, and our general fund, and I'll just say before I get started, the theme to this report is very much, there's really been a lot, not a lot of change since our first quarter report to you. So you'll see a lot of the information, a lot of the dots, the trends that we reported on the first quarter. We're still seeing a lot of those same trends here in the second quarter, which is good news. One thing we'll start with on the property taxes, we have gotten a very key piece of information this year, and that's how large our tax base is for the year. I have some additional information I'll share with you at the end of the presentation about that. But our estimates for the year, the good news is our estimates for the year were right on target with, with what, the actuals are very much on target what the estimates were. The tax base grew by only 0.37%, and that's sort of the, the bad news, the good news, bad news feature to that is the tax base growth still hasn't returned to pre-recession levels. And like I said, I have some more information on that I can share at the end of the presentation. On our sales taxes, to date, we have sales taxes that are up 2.8% compared to last year. The state is continuing to forecast that in the second half of the year that growth will pick up. All the economic reports seem to indicate that the economy is, is healthy and growing, and we do expect that sales tax number to, to pick up in the second half of this fiscal year. We do still have it coded as orange in our report, but hopefully we can come back with the third quarter report and, and report some better results there. One change on here is the state utility tax, and, and one of the, the offshoots of the cold winter is the fact that folks are using more electricity, more natural gas to heat their homes, businesses are doing the same, and the revenues from that, from that tax are directly impacted by the weather. So the fact that it has been a cold winter means more expenses on, on our side on electricity and utility, on, on natural gas, but it also means more revenue coming in from the state utility tax. So we think when we see the receipts start coming in from the second half of the fiscal year, that we're going to see that revenue come in over budget now. So overall, again, not a whole lot of change from first quarter on revenues. I'll highlight one more, and that's the development fees. Our Development Services Department continues to see strong activity there. Their revenues were already at 70% of budget at the end of December, so things are really going well down there. On the expenditure side of the budget and the general fund, again, really no change from the, the first quarter report, the first quarter numbers. We still expect all of our estimates at this point either to be on budget, or we're doing slightly better than budget on the expenditure side. So again, good news there. One thing I will highlight on the expenditures, and this is not in the presentation, or at least not in the slides, was the progress on our landslides. A lot of the work on, on the, to repair those landslides, landslides has been complete, and we're anticipating FEMA reimbursements. In fact, we, we anticipate being back before city council at your next meeting to do a budget amendment to recognize the revenue that we're going to be getting in from FEMA to help with the cost of those repairs. And we think that revenue is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 2.3 million dollars to assist with, with those costs.
Tony, can you go back one, or, and one, yeah. So, all right. Nothing's in the yellow category, but I was trying, confused about, yellow is, would mean that it was, the revenue weren't, they weren't as high as expected.
Correct. Yes. Okay. On our general fund, I mean, on our enterprise funds, again, it's, it's really a status quo report compared to the first quarter. I will highlight two things. The Civic Center Fund, we've now changed the project, projection there to where we think we're doing better than budget. At the end of December, the fund was basically at break even, which is great news for that fund. They had a very active second quarter. They had four additional arena-sized concerts during the second quarter of this year compared to the previous year. They had two very successful nights of widespread panic, and also two very successful nights of the Warren Haynes Christmas Jam. And so the Civic Center is performing very well at this point financially through six months of the fiscal year. The other fund I'll highlight is our parking fund. Again, we've, we've increased, or we've improved our, our forecast on the parking fund. We now think that it's, it's going to do better than budget this year. We're seeing revenues, especially our garage revenues, perform very well in this year, and it looks like those revenues are going to come in over budget on the, on the parking fund. Okay. So that, that concludes sort of the, the look at the, the finances at the end of the second quarter. And if you all remember back at the, the last quarterly report, I talked a little bit about economic data statewide, just sort of give you all a feel for where we may be headed sales tax-wise. So I thought it might be helpful to talk a little bit about our, our tax base, and we titled this slide Beyond the Dots, because it gives you a little more information beyond just the, where we're at financially. But we did get our property tax data from Buncombe County, as I said, in early January, and that's a very key piece of information for us as we're doing budget planning, as we're looking at this year's numbers, as well as when we're doing budget planning for next year. And the reason is that you see that big slice, 54% of our revenue in the general fund comes from property taxes. So obviously, what, how fast the property tax base grow, is growing, very much influences how we're doing financially in the general fund. So this slide shows, this pie chart shows what our, our tax base, our property tax base looks like in Asheville. And the first thing I'll highlight is that the total tax base in Asheville is $11.2 billion, a very big number. That's the total value of all the property in Asheville. And with, with a number that large, obviously, to move the needle and to show a large percentage growth, you need a lot of commercial and residential activity, construction activity going on. And so I think sometimes it's important to, to realize how big that base is. We're talking about 1% and 2% on that. It takes a lot of construction activity to grow that base 1% or 2%. But in, in Asheville, approximately half, or 50% of our tax base is residential. The second biggest, biggest piece is the commercial industrial tax base, which is about 36% of our overall tax base. And then we have some smaller percentages for utilities, personal property, which, which personal property is, is what the category is called. That also includes business inventory property as well. And then finally, motor vehicles make up about 5%. And this is, is pretty typical. I mean, if you look around North Carolina, there's some variations in certain cities about how, how the breakdown between residential and commercial is, but this is pretty typical of what you'll find in most cities across the state. And I think one other sort of interesting piece of information in looking at this is, and we have this information in our financial reports at the end of year, end of the year, is who are some of our largest taxpayers in the city? And just to name the, the top three from our list here, the largest, the largest assessed value is Gura Park Inn. Second is the Town Square West property at, at Biltmore Square. And then there's also, Progress Energy is the third largest taxpayer in the, in the And then finally, this chart shows 15 years' worth of history on our tax base. And I put this up there again to highlight, you know, some of the, the difficulty we've had as the, since the recession in, in terms of seeing our tax base pick up and, and grow again. You can see prior to the recession, around FY10, fiscal year 2010, we had tax base growth of 3.5%. We had 4.2% the year before. And then since then, we've had, we've had very slow growth in our tax base. Now, we're anticipating that to begin to pick up again in future years. We're seeing, again, we're seeing a lot of activity at Development Services, a lot of construction, so we hope to see growth begin to pick up again and go back toward those pre-recession levels, because it does have a tremendous impact on our, on our general fund and our ability to, to fund projects. Okay. And that's all I have this evening. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Yeah. If you could go back one slide. I just wasn't sure what I saw there. That, okay, that's the estimated value of all properties.
Yes.
And you, you said we're hoping it'll go back to before?
Well, we're hoping that the growth rates, if you look at the final, yeah, the growth rates.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, okay. Because I, oh, good. Thank you.
And if I could, if I could add, you know, there's usually an 18-month lag from the time we receive plans, permits are issued, construction occurs. So what you, you heard in the, the previous report is, is a very positive sign that there's value being added. It's just a while before it gets appraised and gets on the tax rolls. So we're probably, you know, we're, we're experiencing that 18-month lag to where you really start seeing a return to those 2%, 3%, or 4% numbers.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Burnett, we're going to hear from you. Hi. An update on the Hominy Creek spill.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for this opportunity. there was a, a release of fuel that occurred on the property. This, this picture here shows the pathway of that flow and how it impacted Hominy Creek, which ultimately had the potential to impact areas within the city. This was just outside of the city limits. The, the dotted line indicates underground flow through a pipeline, and so you can see where the release was and then the path of how that, that product flowed into Hominy Creek. And that happened on, on February 14th. The different roles.
Can we go back to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of questions back there. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no problem.
Is the, the solid line the above-ground flow?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the triangle indicates where it went underground?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, and just to situate us here, are we inside the city limits here, or are we outside? Where are we?
This current location is outside of the city limits, off of Smokey Park Highway, the, the Vulcan property. The Harrison Construction is located on the Vulcan property, and so it is just outside of the city limits by, about one mile.
Past the Inca red light, as they say.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On February 14th, the, the roles that the different agencies of government played in response to, to this spill, the City of Asheville was called to assist Inca Handler Fire Department in their jurisdiction, working under the direction of Buncombe County Emergency Management. Since it was a, a large spill, our resources were called to assist. When, when we arrived on scene, our resources weren't needed at the site, and so when, our next steps were to place some downstream booms so that, as the product had the potential to enter the waterway, that we would try to intercept that as much as possible. We also assisted in a standby mode in case any monitoring needed to occur in, in that area, either air monitoring or identifying any of the product that might be in the river. The, the role after the initial spill is mitigated, the emergency part is over, the, the role turns over to state and federal agencies, being North Carolina Department of Environment, Natural Resources, and then also at the federal level, the EPA. The, the role of Deener and the EPA is to supervise the, the cleanup from the responsible party, in this case, the, the, the property owner, the, the contractor where the spill occurred. And so state and federal resources permit and oversee the cleanup by the contractor for, for that role. And so that, that's the role of state and federal government for that cleanup. And, and Deener has been on-site since February, February 14th supervising this cleanup, both on the property as well as in Hominy Creek and the French Broad River. Related to the cleanup, as reported to us from, from Deener, what the contract has, contractor has completed was cleaning all of the non-porous surfaces, the asphalt, the concrete, excavating and removing all of the, the contaminated soils, pumping out and excavating the retention pond on-site, and then also all of the downstream booms have been able to be removed because they've caught any, any product that might have, have escaped from, from the initial booms it replaced. So the remaining cleanup, as reported to us by Deener, is the remaining booms that are in Hominy Creek at, at the site, they anticipate that those will be removed by the weekend. And when the, the contractors make determinations of whether or not to remove a booms, they're, they're inspected twice daily by Deener personnel, and once there is no longer product that, that those booms would be retaining, then they're allowed to remove those booms. And so Deener anticipates that they will likely be removed before the weekend. So next steps related to this spill, there will be an initial abatement report submitted to the state, the, being North Carolina Deener, within 30 days. And that, that will outline the initial abatement that has been supervised by both state and federal agencies, what that abatement includes, and any remaining abatement that would need to occur. And also, the preliminary results of the stream samples collected downstream were non-detect-for diesel range organic, so that would indicate that there's no, no residual fuel downstream. And then also, just as of yesterday, as reported to us by, by Deener, a notice of violation was issued to, to the, the responsible party, Harrison, that where the spill is located. And so with that, that concludes my update, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
All right. Go ahead.
Chief Burnett, how far from the, from Hominy Creek was the storage tank?
I, I don't have that exact distance, but it was probably about 100 yards in that, in that range, but I could, I could certainly get you the exact distance.
And I ask because I'm curious, within the city limits, what rules or guidelines we have in place for this type of pollutant storage in proximity to waterways? I don't know if that's, if there's familiarity with that, or if that's something that we'll have to come back to.
We'll have to come back with information of what standards or regulation there are about that. Be happy to do that.
Also, pardon me. Also, are there requirements for catchment basins around these types of tanks? Are there a certain size that require some sort of birmingham or catchment basin?
Yes, sir, typically. I, I can't speak exactly to what those requirements are, but yes, sir, there are for hydrocarbon storage. There is, is requirement for spill containment.
And I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but did that have it, or did it just miss, or?
Honestly, I do not know. The next steps with, with that initial abatement report would, would be part of Deener's findings into, to determine, you know, what exactly was supposed to be there, and then how that matched up with what exactly occurred.
Yeah. And I suspect we would probably really be more concerned with that, what we have in place going forward in the city to prevent this sort of thing happening. And, you know, I suspect that with that being outside of our jurisdiction, the state takes over on their requirements, but I would be interested, for one, to find out what we have in place, maybe at the Public Safety Committee level or something to, as we go forward, to make sure this sort of thing doesn't happen again.
Yes, sir. Be more than happy to, to provide a report. Be more than happy to, to provide a report.
Chief, early, the press reports said about 5,000 gallons had spilled. Is that still the number?
That is my understanding, that, that it was, you know, the initial, the initial amount, that the potential was 5,000 and that it was around 1,500 gallons that potentially could have, have impacted the stream. But those, those, those numbers are based on the initial reports and the updates that we have received from Deaner.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one more. Chief Burnett, how, how well-equipped do you feel you were to be able to respond to this kind of event?
We're, we're very fortunate within the City of Asheville in that we are, one, as you're aware, one of six regional hazardous materials response teams in the state. And so the City of Asheville has the highest level of hazardous materials resources throughout the entire state of North Carolina. The, the next closest community that has our resource capability is Charlotte. And so we, we provide has, initial hazardous materials services. When local governments seek assistance from the state, the City of Asheville is the arm for that. That is a program that is funded by the state for this region. And so that partnership allows City of Asheville to have much greater hazardous materials response capability than we would had we not had that. So, so the, the hazardous materials capabilities for western North Carolina lives right here in Asheville. So compared to communities our size, we are certainly much more prepared, both with equipment and with training, to respond to those types of events.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can we make this available online? You know, we've had people email us, questions, concerns, and like to be able to send them to this. And it, once we do get it online, if you could just shoot us a link so we can easily redistribute that. Thank you for, for doing that. Thanks for taking the time to do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. That concludes presentations and reports. Next, we're going to move into the public hearings. With regard to the public hearings, individuals can have up to three minutes to speak. If you are speaking on behalf of a group, however, and three other people yield their time to you, you can speak for 10 minutes. The first public hearing, item A, is the continuation of a public hearing to consider conditional zoning of 12.33 acres for a project known as the Avalon, located on Sweeten Creek Road, from industrial district to RM16 multifamily high-density district slash conditional zoning for the development of eight multifamily buildings and one clubhouse building. Ms. Bernstein will do the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. As was just mentioned, this is a proposal to conditionally zone this 12-acre site from industrial to RM16 for that multifamily apartment complex. Council received a presentation on this proposal back at the meeting on December 10th. So I'm not planning to go into great detail on the proposal, but can answer any questions that you may have on the, on the project itself. Because the comprehensive plan that we have includes policies that recommend retaining industrially-zoned properties for industrial uses, council requested that this project be continued until tonight's meeting, with the instruction for staff to evaluate the industrial suitability of this site. And that study concluded that the site doesn't have a high potential for industrial development for various reasons, and staff recommends that the proposed conditional zoning to RM16 should be supported. Sam Powers, the Economic Development Director, led that study. He's here to answer questions about the study, the evaluation, or questions about what were the different factors that brought that response. And like I said, I'm happy to, to go back and answer any specific questions about the project itself. Also, the applicant and their agent are here as well. So that, that's all I was gonna, gonna go into unless you have any questions for me.
Great. The mayor stepped away for a minute. She'll be back very soon. I'd like to just expand a little more from this standpoint regarding the industrial site consideration. The background there for the public that wasn't tuned in the time before is that an industrial zone site is unavailable for much of anything else beyond specified uses. It cannot include residential. We, we know well from research that we've done years ago and have, and have continued to review, that industrial sites are very few in the, in this county and in the city, and that in order to achieve economic development goals, it's important that we have sites available for industry to locate. The hesitancy of council to move forward a couple of months ago was entirely related to that at the time, I believe. And the good news on the industrial site front is that between our economic development staff and the Economic Development Coalition of Asheville and Buncombe County, there's a new, a renewed commitment to understanding more about industrial site inventory and how, how we might need to approach that in the future. I just, I wanted to make sure the public understood a little more about what that was about. But I think we, as Ms. Bernstein said, we, we've determined that this site is okay from an industrial site inventory standpoint to rezone, and we would be able to move forward with that. Regarding the, the moving forward here, would the developer like to take a moment to address council and the public on this matter? Mr. Lou Bissett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Lou Bissett. I, I am representing the developer of the Avalon project. We'll try to be brief as well, since you've been through this once before in December. I do have William Ratchford, who is from the, the developer, and Thomas Jones from Lapsley and Associates, the engineer, with me. I wanted to say a little bit about Mr. Ratchford's company. It's a, it's a regional company headquartered in Gastonia, was founded in the 60s by his grandfather. And it's, it's a little bit unusual in that it's an owner, builder, and operator. I was, I was interested for William to tell me this afternoon that they've, they've only sold one project that they've built in the history of the company. And so they're, when they build a project, they stay with the project and they operate it. And they currently have a project underway in the actual area off Mills Gap Road. And if this project is approved, they will have invested about $41 million in the City of Asheville. They've got, aside from the, from the two projects in Asheville, they've got two in Hendersonville, got projects in Spartanburg, Greenville, Shelby. And they are the largest operator in the city of Charlotte that actually own and operate their, their units. I'd like to just take a minute to thank the city and particularly the city staff for looking into the industrial site issue. I've, I've been, I've been interested in economic development in Asheville in the 40 years that I've been here, and I currently sit on the Economic Development Coalition. So I understand and I agree with all of you of the importance of those sites. But I think you have to look at them on a, on a site-by-site basis. I believe that's what the city did. And I think the staff and the, and the PED, and actually the Chamber Economic Development Department, agree that this is not a high-priority site. We believe that, that this 192-unit project is needed in this area. It's shovel-ready. It's, it's not a, it's not a project that if you approve it tonight, it'll be another year getting underway. It's ready to go. And the reason that's important is, I was just looking at some information from, from the, from the Carolina's Multihousing Private Capital Group. And at the end of 2013, there was a 4.2% vacancy rate in apartments in the Asheville area. That means we need apartments. There was also a 4% increase in rates last year. So we, and, and this is not a luxury-priced apartment. This is a, this is a workforce-oriented apartment. And we believe that the addition of another 192 units can do nothing but put some downward pressure on that escalating price situation in our apartment markets. So at that, I'll sit down. I think William would like to talk a little bit with you about the sustainability aspects of his project, and we would appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Just some information. We will start framing first, about the second week of March on the Palisades, just in case you're wondering. And we would bid out this project for grading, to probably finish the completed site in March or April of next year, depending on weather. Since we are owners and long-term operators, we try to look at things that create subsistence ability for the project, less wear and tear over the years. The existing site, as you can see, has been disturbed about 12 years ago for a, it was a, it was a borrowed site for a road project, is what we've been told. There's very lack of, there's a lack of almost complete vegetation on the site. Our company, just with the landscaping plan required by the city, is going to put in over 100 new trees and several hundred bushes. And that's in addition to what's required, and we tend to go beyond those steps. We will put a community garden in, and our, part of our parking lots do have perpervious pavement in there to reduce the impervious counts. From the last plan you saw, we did slightly change our two- and three-bedroom plan. What it did is it reduced the entire footprint by about seven feet linearly, but it, it kept the same square footage, it just, it helped save the truss count and helped save, it helped reduce the amount of wood needed in this project. We tend to use Trexboard on all balconies. Typically on a balcony, we're having to replace, every 15 to 20 years, we're having to replace balconies throughout those projects that we own. This should make them last for about 50, less repair, I mean, less repair, less trips to the landfill over the years. We're going to use energy-star appliances and low, low-flow water fixtures. One of our typical biggest wastes on turns in our current, in apartments, and I would say throughout the whole apartment industry, is floor coverings. There's a lot of carpet traded on turns and, and a lot of vinyl. And what we tend to use and what we will use on the site, we will ceramic tile all bathrooms, heavy-used areas, dining rooms and bathrooms. And then we always, we always order an extra amount of tile to replace individual tiles as needed. So we do have, we make sure we have current stock that matches. Then we tend to use, we use a 32-ounce carpet industry-wide, using 17 to 24, depending on the quality. And we're using the heavier quality, heavier-quality carpet because it tends to clean up, it tends to hold, it doesn't, the mat doesn't, the mat doesn't drop, and you can usually get another turn or two out of the property, or out of the apartment unit, depending on the, the use. And other than that, we'd like to open it up for questions that council may have.
Any questions? All right. No questions? You do have, okay, go ahead. Do you, who are you directing your question to?
Great question, Mayor. I'm directing my questions to, to the developer. I appreciate your being here and really grateful for the investment that you're willing to make in the community. We like partnering with, with responsible folks, and it's great to hear about the garden and the pervious services and all the energy and things that you're doing to try to make these places more durable. Vice Mayor Hunt said that the reason for the delay was entirely based on the industrial rezoning. It's not entirely true. Was also had some concerns around affordability and hoped that we'd be able to approach that. So I guess one of the, the things that I wanted to, to ask you today, we've got a, as a council goal since 2006, establishing more affordable housing in the city, and we recently reinforced that at our, at our retreat a couple of weeks ago. And in recent months, we've approved hundreds and hundreds of new apartment units, but only 14 of them are affordable. I was just wondering if you could talk to us about the price points that you're bringing and the possibilities for affordability there.
Okay. Our current apartment price range is very close to your workfare housing rates. One-bedrooms are around 800s, two-bedrooms are about 1,000, and our three-bedrooms are 1,250 to 1,300 range. Compared to many of the projects you've approved, they're considered, they're considerably lower. We feel that, you know, I got a couple copies of the CBRE report that Mr. Bissett reported, if you'd like to see them. But you're showing in the, in the market, a 4% increase from 2012 to 2013 in these, in the, in the apartment industry in the Asheville submarket. Out of this, there was 283 units completed. Of them, 200 units were ours in Hendersonville. The units under construction, we represent our, I meant, the units, the units in construction, we represented 384 out of the 906, because I have a second phase in Hendersonville and in Asheville. And then out of the units planned, we represent 20% of the units planned. And out of the units planned, we always assume about half the units never make it out of the ground. You don't have a JV partner, you lose funding, it's not, you know, you're trying to sell it to somebody else. That's just typically what we see on average. And what, what you're seeing is a, 93% is what the rate you want in the apartment industry in a market. 93% allows your, your citizens and constituents to market-drive the price. If it's below 93% occupancy, the, the, the price is set more by the, by the demand. They will, you know, you can have the option that, you know, your person that wants to pay $2,000 a month and live uptown, they can do it. But what it also forces is the units that are getting $900 or $1,000 now, just because there's nothing else available, will have to either update, upgrade, or go back to sort of the rents that they were going after, or initially set to go after. And, I mean, that's what you're seeing in this market. From our, I, I personally set about 90% of all the units for our, for our portfolio in several regions. And, I mean, we've seen several apartment deals come in, in markets. In Gastonia, for example, we built one complex, we own 18, and we control about, we control a large percentage of the market. There was five tax credit deals that came in, and rents were never affected in that town. It didn't help your policemen, your firemen, who were paying 500, 600, even $700 a month because it, it never affected. In Rock Hill, Rock Hill's about 65,000, so they're about three-quarters of your size, they had about four market-rate apartment deals come in. And, you know, rents stabilized for 18 months. And what it did was the units, we had the choice that we could update some of our units to collect more money, or we decided to, or we decided to leave it alone because they were less than five years old. We did not want to move. And depending on the age of the apartments, we built, we built and rehabbed a better unit for the constituents. And so I, you know, I believe that market-rate apartments will drive the economy and make it better for not just, not just your low-rate apartment units, but for all units. Because it puts, it puts the push on the, on the operator of the units to bake a better sale to your clients.
I appreciate it. That's, it's real nice to have that, that picture coming from y'all and the understanding that part of what we do have to do is just increase housing stock across the city. I know that as, as a council, we've been looking at ways to mix that up. So I'm somewhat disappointed about the, the lack of that affordable element in here, but I do value the, the unit stock that you're, that you're bringing at the same time. So I appreciate that, and I'll pause for now.
Mayor.
Yeah. Mr. Ratchford, I appreciate as well the explanation here. And, and tell me if I got it right. Mr. Ratchford, I appreciate as well the explanation here, and, and tell me if I got it right here. But essentially, what I hear you saying is that the market drives what the rents would be, and the greater the supply, that'll stabilize your rents here. What role do you see for local government in trying to address the situation where probably 40% of our tenants are, they're, they're paying more in rent than, than sometimes 40% of their income there? Do we have a role to play here in helping to ameliorate that situation?
I think from when we designed the Palisades, we had this project coming in similar behind it. And we realized with the Palisades, if we did not build this project, we'd probably charge another $40 a unit. But we let, we brought them both in and dropped the rates, knowing that those two will have an effect on each other, being two and a half miles away. What we're seeing on the development end, I mean, there's starting to be some skittishness about coming to Asheville, about the ability to get through plans and get through marketing all the way, from what I, from what I see. Now, the bright side is, everybody saw that same CBRE report. There's going to be more developers coming in, you know, and try to push through. And your staff, your staff is, I got about eight projects we're working on between construction and planning, and we target about five different markets right now in construction. Your city, I mean, your city staff is better than any, any of the other groups I've ever messed with. I mean, you're...
Wait, pause, just hold on. Did you hear that? Just like a moment. Okay, go ahead.
They're, you know, they're resourceful, they're to the point, and, you know, it's, it's good to be challenging. You know, and at the same point in time, as once I build these projects, I like to be all be as hard as possible to make it for other people to enter. But, you know, as long as people know what you expect from the very beginning, and your staff knows what you are expecting and has, you know, and can go down that I need this, 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 you know, it's great. Because I, you know, it's not like I'm coming into, some of the smaller towns we mess with, you know, you're coming to council, and it's a complete shop. That, you know, you think you're good, you think you have everything, and then somebody changes their mind. Your standards are very, very specific, and at least we know what you want. And, you know, I applaud the City of Asheville on that, that, you know, it's a tough process to enter, but, you know, if you keep it the same, you're going to, you're going to have your stock of apartments coming in.
Just one, just a follow-up, real quick. Did staff indicate to you at any point from when you first came to the city to today that one of the strategic goals of the city was to increase the affordable housing stock, and inquired whether you want to help participate in that?
They asked about midway through if I wanted to talk to the Affordable Housing Council, which, you know, there's not, most of the cities we don't, we deal with do not, does not have that resource. But, you know, we, we talked to them, and we explored options and explained, but that was part of our interest of going towards that workforce housing range numbers. That, you know, if I can get close to those numbers, you know, you're in a severe need. I mean, there is, there is some question I got, you know, if you start talking to your staff and see where they're located, some of them can't afford to live in Asheville, you know. And, you know, that's part of the reasoning, and when I talk to, when I talk to everybody in City of Asheville, I kind of ask where, where you live or where you want to live, trying to get a better idea of your city and the way it's working. And if you can get, you know, it's the mid-range workforce housing that helps your industries come in. I mean, you have, you should be applauded on the industries that are, you know, coming, we're very excited about coming into the City of Asheville with our units. We think we can have a, we think we can play a role in the, in the housing market. And we think, we, I, opinion, my opinion, I think rates are coming, going to come down in Asheville. It's going to be, it's going to be about 14 months, but I believe rates are going to actually flatline for a little bit of time to catch up, at least for your, at least for your, at least for your jobs to pick up and inflation. And, you know, that's good, that, that will be good for your market and good for your, it should help more commercial and industrial stuff to come into this town.
This is an important discussion we're having, and it's been ongoing, and will continue. I think it's the case that, I'll speak for myself. I believe that our, our development ordinance, the UDO that was passed in the mid-'90s, did not do near enough to create sites of, or to allow sites available for multifamily housing development. I think that reforming our zoning code and updating our comprehensive plan so that we are better able to accommodate multifamily development, to not only address the supply-demand curve, but also infill density and increase the tax base, there are various reasons to do it, and I think this council generally agrees with that. It is the case right now that we don't have very many sites available for a developer to do multifamily. It usually requires asking for some sort of variance on our zoning in order to be able to develop as you guys wish to do. I, I think that it, it becomes somewhat arbitrary to, to view that those that request zoning variances are the ones to extract commitments from affordable housing out of, where other, others that are able to develop under used-by-right, we don't have that ability. My preference would be to, to move forward over the next couple of years or so, reform our zoning code, make it a level playing field, so there's more predictability for everybody that might want to develop for any reason in the, in the city. And also have, have that all geared in a way that incentivizes and encourages affordable housing development. But I, as for this project, you and your dad and I have talked specifically about all this, and I, I would say to the rest of council, I don't, just as we discovered with the Radloft discussion around adding affordability there, I don't think that this developer is going to be willing to play ball, and I, we had a serious discussion about that. And so my view is that let's, is that we should move forward with this project and, and look at the bigger, broad policy approaches to achieve affordability.
I think I heard a motion. Did I hear it?
I move to approve the zoning map amendment from the industrial to RM16 conditional zoning, subject to the conditions recommended by staff and find that the request is reasonable, based on information provided in the staff report and as stated in the staff recommendation. Is that for a motion?
You did it very good, Gwen.
And I second it.
Some more comment, Mayor?
And I didn't mean to, yes, go ahead, please.
The suggestions that Vice Mayor Hunt is making are really good ones, and it's my hope that we're going to be able to pursue that. We've got so many things in the hopper right now in regard to affordable housing policy between the scorecard that's come out and the, the market data that we're going to be receiving, in addition to some of the private stuff that we may be able to get our hands on if we're, if we're lucky. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to being able to create that policy framework for us to be able to improve around affordable housing. I think that the predictability piece, there's a few sides to it, and one is that it's been entirely predictable for service workers and others in this community that they're not going to be able to easily locate affordable housing. That's, that's been very predictable for them for quite a long time. And what we have to do as a council is, is be able to be clear about what we do expect. And, and I'll take my piece of responsibility for that, that's on me, too. I don't feel that I've been as consistent as the goals that I've espoused. And so I want to be able to say tonight that, that I will become much more predictable in this regard. And, and it's my hope that as we go forward, we can have policy frameworks that will allow everyone to experience that predictability. One last thing, conditional zoning is the place where it's appropriate to ask for this kind of thing. To place conditions on a zoning change when we're losing industrial land forever is not unreasonable, and it may be something that we do in the future. So I don't want anyone to get the idea that when it comes to conditional zoning, we're not going to do conditions. I think, I can see the way the votes go on tonight, but as far as process goes, conditional zoning is the place that councils can ask for things that help to meet their strategic goals. So it's not out of order or out of line to bring that up tonight. That's, that's all I have to say now. And as far as the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, we have been interviewing developers to ask how we can do better, to help y'all, help us get to those strategic goals. And so if it's okay with you, I'd love to be able to suggest that our community development staff reach out and speak with you as well?
I have spoke to them before. I will, I will be open to speaking to them again, especially, I mean, you have the, the situation is ripe for y'all to have some tax credit communities come in with, and I see it that, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be kind of different, it's going to, if you see the way Charlotte's moving in the Midwest, and, I mean, not the Midwest, but the West Coast, and it's going to be urban when those tax credit. And that's what you want, you want the urban. And so, you know, I, I don't see it on the suburban site, per se, but you're going, I think you're going to see some developers coming in in the next probably 18 months, own something urban. Because you're, the tax credits are set up right, and if, you got to be the right fit as a company, and you got to know exactly how to set it up to run it through the system. But once, those guys' eyes will be opened.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion. I want to open it up for public comment, but I don't want to stop any, if anyone has any other questions. Okay. I'll now open up this item for a public comment. We have a motion to approve. If there's anyone who'd like to provide comment, please go ahead and do so now. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. All right. Any other questions, comments before we vote on this? Okay. All, you know what, we're going to raise our hand. Okay, how about that? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right. Any opposed? Okay. You got that? All right. It was five to two, right? Did I count it right? All right. So we don't require a second reading on this. Thank you, gentlemen. You don't have to come back. Well, on this one. All right. The next item is a public hearing to consider conditionally zoning property located at Quail Hollow Drive and Weston Road from RS4 residential single-family medium-density district and institutional district to RS4 residential single-family medium-density district slash conditional zoning to create a major subdivision. Ms. Bernstein, again, is handling this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The project site, as you can see here on the Exhibit A map, consists of a 4.29 portion, 4.29 acre portion of two larger parcels located off of Quail Hollow Drive with frontage along Weston Road, connects into Sweeten Creek. This is the industrial, no longer industrial site that you all were just discussing. Just to provide a little bit of zoning background on the site, you can see they are, the two parcels are split-zoned currently. The line separating the institutional portion along Sweeten Creek Road from the RS4 portion that's adjacent to the existing Quail Hollow Drive subdivision is, is shown right here. This area was annexed into the city back in 2004, and at that time, during the annexation, that split zoning was put in place. During the discussions, the city initially proposed RM16, an institutional, and you can see, here's the RM16 that they were basing that off of, and that line was, was to continue there. The residents of the existing subdivision preferred a single-family zoning adjacent to their development, and the property owner was amenable to that. So the, the site has been zoned this way since it came into the city. The project area is currently vacant. And when I put up the Exhibit B map, you can see those eight houses along Quail Hollow Drive that this same applicant built. The proposal is to extend that subdivision to the second phase. And just off of the map here. So you can see the proposal's to extend Quail Hollow Drive. It would terminate in the cul-de-sac as well as that stub-out turnaround that's over towards Weston Road. There'd be 12 single-family home lots. There's also two lots designated for open space and street trees according to the city's standards. This subdivision that's shown, it complies by right with the city's technical standards. The issue is shown with this highlighted strip right here, that's that area of institutional zoning. The city seeks to avoid creating split-zoned lots for development. There's eight lots that would have conflicting zoning standards, setbacks, open-space requirements, landscape buffering, it's, it's a messy situation. We prefer to avoid doing that, creating that situation. So staff suggested that they conditionally rezone that strip, and, and the whole project comes into, to the conditional zoning application because of that. But just to be very clear, the application for the subdivision complies by right, the, really the only issue here is eliminating that strip of institutional zoning. The project was recommended for approval by both the Technical Review Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was some discussion, and I'm sure you saw in the minutes that were included with the staff report at the P&amp;Z, about the ability to connect that stub-out turnaround to Weston Road. We have, the city has goals and policies that encourage connectivity, interconnectivity, and discourage cul-de-sacs. The hitch there is that Weston Road is under DOT's authority. The Planning and Zoning Commission put a condition on their recommendation that said, should DOT determine that a connection can be safely made, then the plan should be revised to include that connection, and the developer agreed to that. However, as you saw in the, in the staff packet, the DOT's determination was that it's, it's just not a safe connection point, and they don't believe that it's a viable option, so that recommendation has, has been dropped from the staff's report. There were a number of neighbors present at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with concerns about the project, both for and opposed to the connection, that I think that's been accurately reflected in the minutes that you received, but I can try and elaborate on any of that if you have any questions. So staff does recommend support of the conditional zoning. It eliminates that split-zoned situation that can create confusion, and also because the residential subdivision complies with city standards and is allowed by right. That concludes my report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Is there anyone with the developer that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. For the record, my name's William Lapsley. I'm a consulting engineer and acting as an agent for the developer and the owners of the property. Mr. Holland is here with me tonight, and his sister, Mrs. Gardner, is sitting in the back. We appreciate the staff's efforts in reviewing the project and the planning board, and as Jessica alluded to, we did meet with DOT District Engineer and discuss the situation with the connection. And as most of, I'm sure you know, Weston Road is a very heavily-traveled road, and there's, the geometry of Weston Road in this area has some curves, and, and the District Engineer, as well as myself, were concerned about the safety of making that connection. So we're here tonight to answer any questions that you might have about the project.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? No? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the, wait, you need a motion. I'm sorry. Gwen looks like she's about to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm just, I recommend that we approve the conditional zoning from RS4 and institutional to RS4 and subject to the conditions suggested by the staff and find that the request is reasonable and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, based on information provided in the staff report and as stated in the staff recommendation.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment on this proposal, please come forward at this time. All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. All right. Are we ready to vote on the motion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Our final public hearing tonight is a public hearing to consider rezoning a portion of 101 Bruce Road from institutional district to commercial industrial district. And Blake Esselton, I'm never, I'm just, can you just say it?
Esselton.
Esselton is here to talk about this project. Thank you.
Good evening. The subject property is located on Sandhill School Road. This here on the map is Sandhill School Road, Highland Center Boulevard, and Bruce Road. The nearby landmarks would be the Sandhill Venable Elementary School, the Buncombe County Sports Park, and it's close to the I-40 interchange at Smokey Park Highway, although it takes a circuitous route to get there. The existing use for this parcel is a, an equipment sales rental and service business... The existing use for this parcel is a, an equipment sales rental and service business, and although the project is, the name for the project on the file is Bruce Road, the affected street is Sand Hill School Road. You can see that only a portion of the property is hatched on the Exhibit A map. The entire parcel is about six acres, but only about four-tenths of an acre would be subject to the rezoning. Staff's supposition is that this was zoned as it was when the UDO was adopted in 1997 because Sand Hill School Road is largely institutional and residential in character. Most of the existing land uses are either homes or the school, the church, the park, things like that. The strip is only 50 feet deep, however, and its intent was to keep the character of the corridor institutional, but in fact, it does not, would not preclude a high-impact development on that property. For example, a hotel could be developed on the property even with the existing zoning. The applicant has requested the rezoning of this strip from institutional to commercial industrial to make it consistent, to simplify the situation, and change it so that he would not have differing development standards on differing pieces of the property. The strip zoning here is not currently considered a recommended zoning practice. As I mentioned, this zoning wouldn't really preclude a high-impact development. There are certainly uses that are allowed in CI that are not allowed in institutional, but as I said, about 93% of the property is already zoned CI. In talking with our transportation department, as you know, Mr. Moore has worked for DOT in the past, and both city staff and DOT would direct an applicant to have any entrances off Highland Center Boulevard. So, although this is the busier road, entrances should be constructed off of one of the lower, the roads with less traffic. There was some concern about conflicts with the pickup and drop-off during the school day, or at the beginning and end of the school day, I should say. The rezoning could conceivably allow for a larger sign on Sand Hill School Road. Staff notified the school, spoke with both the principal of the elementary school and spoke with the director of facilities for Buncombe County. The director of facilities did raise some questions, asked a number of questions, but I have not since received any communication. I'm not aware if they're here tonight. I don't think the applicant is here tonight. The P&amp;Z recommendation was unanimous for approval. Staff feels that the rezoning request is reasonable and consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans, and strongly recommends approval. That concludes my presentation.
All right, are there any questions?
I move to approve the zoning map amendment from institutional district to commercial industrial district.
Second.
All right, I'll open the floor for public comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. It's just out there today. Visiting the third graders at Sand Hill Venable. They were delightful. All right, that concludes the public hearings. I don't see that we have any unfinished business. We have under new business, are we, that's right, Mr. Glines is here to talk to us about adopting the Haywood Road Vision Plan. It's very exciting. And thank you for hanging on, Haywood Road people. I see somebody there.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, members of the public, it's my pleasure to come before you tonight to consider the adoption of the Haywood Road Vision Plan. Members of the community and the West Asheville Business Association began meeting in 2002 to discuss the future of Haywood Road and strategize on ways to improve the corridor, improve the business capacity on the corridor, and sort of imagine the future there. All these years later, we're bringing it to you now. It's been ready, I guess, for about a year or so, just bringing the final document to you. We are making some progress on the form code, which came out of efforts for the Vision Plan. The Vision Plan is focused on the French Broad River up to Patton Avenue, and it's about a two-and-a-half mile stretch. There's a variety of zoning in this area. A lot of it was felt to not meet the community standard for what people envisioned for the future, so this is the effort of the plan. These things were, these priorities were identified early on, and double-checking after a number of years and double-checking again, these rested in these six primary categories. The community felt like these are valid and still useful today for the discussion for the future of Haywood Road. Transportation and streetscape, historic preservation, land use and zoning, economic development, safety, and neighborhood issues. And these topics were general umbrella ideas, and each one has strategies and areas of improvement. But for transportation and streetscape, it's not hard to imagine a better street out there, really. We have a lot of curb cuts, and we'd like to make it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. Traffic's moving pretty good, but there's strategies that could, including our complete streets policy, which could improve Haywood Road over time. Historic preservation was an important factor. These are two side-by-side photos, 1920s and today, and there's just a real big interest in maintaining the historic flavor and character of Haywood Road, not just in the form of the buildings, but also just saving the older structures as well. So, we're looking at strategies for that. Haywood Road, Haywood Road and West Asheville community has a lot of other historic resources, so there's a lot of strategies and therefore improving, I guess, the community's knowledge of Haywood Road's rich history and West Asheville's rich history. Topics related to land use and economic development. The community overall supports mixed-use development. Also, they support that pedestrian realm, improving the pedestrian district and the pedestrian realm at the streetscape and the sidewalk. This community is really supportive of the West Asheville local businesses. We did, part of the survey questions were, what type of businesses would people like to see on the corridor that aren't there today? And one of them was a hardware store, so the Maryland Avenue hardware store model was something that people identified as being something that they'd really like to have on the corridor, as well as additional grocery shopping, drugstores, other community weekly services. We did note in this, during economic study, is that parking is a growing challenge, and so the form code has some strategies for trying to deal with that as we move forward. Last but not least, safety and neighborhood issues. They're kind of one in the same in a lot of ways, but driveway and curb cuts along the corridor are problematic. There needs to be additional crosswalks, safety of measures for pedestrians. And then, the neighborhood is using social media to get the word out on things, and so we want to follow suit with that and make that more of a highlight. This effort has been, it's been a community effort, and it wouldn't have happened without the consistent help of a steering committee. Some folks are here tonight, but it's been a great, my great pleasure to work with this fantastic group of neighbors and West Asheville business property owners and nearby residents, and it's been a real pleasure. We've also had a number of focus group meetings for different topics over the years. Two citizen surveys, the first one was in 2006, and we followed up again in 2011, more or less asking the same questions, but sort of trying to get more detail at it. And that second survey, we had 600 responses to the preference survey. It wasn't scientific, but it's a preference survey, so it helps with the big-picture items. We had a number of large community meetings through that period of time, and we've kept a web presence through WABA and efforts with the city website. I've mentioned that the form code is something that we're working on currently, and it has come out of this, the Vision Plan effort. And I will just say that we have a community meeting to review the initial draft of the form code on March 27th. It will be at the Hall Fitch Elementary School, and more times and details will be forthcoming after that. I can answer any questions for you if you have any. What I'll say, one other thing just to add is, what you have in front of you is primarily a Word document, but we do, we will populate it with additional photos, maps, and a whole appendix of supporting documentation. I just was working in the last few days on the list of folks who participated in meetings over the period of time, and this is pulled through the sign-in sheets over a number of meetings, so we have, you know, lots of community members over a long period of time have participated. Also have the results from the surveys, we'll have each of those included, what people were looking for, and, you know, other survey result details and stuff. So, it's going to be a, when it's online, it'll be a full document. People can look at all the ideas and comments as part of that in the appendix, so, thank you.
Does anyone have any comments, questions?
Mayor?
Yes?
Comment. First of all, this is really thrilling, because it's been a long time getting here, and it, in fact, I was on planning and zoning when this thing first started in its first iteration, and Carl Loebi was the planner that was assigned to that, and I think Alan may have been there at those early meetings, the West Asheville Library, and I would say to the West Asheville community that's been very involved in this, they could not have had a better planner than Alan Glines. So, I think that he has been just, done a great job of putting things, places, and people together, and it's thrilling for me, as a, growing up in West Asheville, to see the same fabric and the desires to keep it the way it is, but make it better, and it's just a really great process that people have been involved with it over the years. Great work, great corridor planning, and it bodes for a good future, for a great place.
It is.
While you're up here, Alan, could you just briefly, I think there's been some confusion in the community between the Vision Plan and the Form-Based Code.
Right.
Things that'll be coming forward. I wonder if you could just differentiate those for folks?
Differentiate that. The Vision Plan is goals and ideas for the future of the corridor, and the form code will be specifics about redevelopment. The form code will replace the existing zoning on the corridor and will have a pattern of new development, rules for new development, what's allowed along the corridor parcel by parcel. The Vision Plan is more of a general document, and it doesn't have that level of detail. It has a lot of recommendations, but it, and it's sort of a precursor to a form code. So, that's the simplified way of the difference.
Thank you. I mean, you can see how folks who-
Absolutely.
-hadn't been there could get those two things mixed up. I also just wanted to, first of all, we've got a couple of folks here in the audience who have been a part of this since day one. Alice Oglesby is back there, and Steve Rasmussen is back here, who are, have had their shoulders to the wheel on this thing for over a decade, along with you, Jan.
Mine's very low.
So, I just want to recognize those two for being a part of this. They're here to see this thing get across the finish line. They've been at it for a long time. And then there's just some policy considerations that the plan brings up. It mentions a future 15-minute transit frequency over there, and just something to put in the, put in the hopper for us to be considering as we're doing our longer-aged transit planning. It was also interesting to note the history of seeing the road go from four lanes to two lanes, especially on the heels of our Charlotte Street conversation, and also to see that the number-one recommendation to help improve that was to reduce those curb cuts, which is also what we're seeing over at Charlotte Street. So, I think it can really inform what we're thinking about as far as Charlotte Street goes, to see what the community has, what our experience has been in doing a lane diet and doing a road diet, and how we can reduce those curb cuts to improve safety and just walkability, and all those businesses are hopping in West Asheville. The pedestrian crossings, we've got, we've got, DOT put up some nice, big, bright signs, just kind of really high and hard to notice, and I'm hoping we can, we can improve on that as well. I think so much of this plan does call for a really solid pedestrian experience. I work over in the Bledsoe Building, and this is the kind of anchor building over there in West Asheville, and it's got small businesses in it and solo practitioners like myself, as well as housing for working people over there, and it's, it's just kind of the heart of West Asheville over there. And I think that this plan helps to preserve that spirit, and the coming form-based code is going to allow for continued growth and development on the corridor while holding on to that, and I'm just really grateful for all the work that you all have put in. I think that there's going to be generations of people on Haywood Road who won't know to be thankful to you, but ought to be.
Yep. Anyone else? All right, we do need a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to accept the Haywood Road Vision Plan.
Second.
Okay, all right, and I know there's a couple of folks here, if anyone would like to take an opportunity to speak on this issue. We allow three minutes for comment per person.
Thank you. My name's Alice Oglesby from the West Asheville Business Association. Thanks, you guys, for considering this, and really thank you so much to the staff, especially Alan, for their dedication, because it is something that we really did see an amazing community response to and involvement, but it absolutely is true that we wouldn't have been able to do this for the 10-plus, what is it, 12 years now, without having the guidance and the assistance of staff to keep us on track and help do meetings and be experts in bringing information to us at meetings. So, I think that as other parts of our community are looking to do this, I encourage them to work that same system. I mean, it really helps immensely. So, thank you so much. I'm really excited to see this come through, and I think the community is really behind it, and it's going to be terrific for our area. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
My name's Steve Rasmussen. I'm a 20-year resident of West Asheville and a member of the steering committee that helped put this Vision Plan together, and I just want to reiterate that the development of this plan really drew from a wide and cooperative spectrum of the West Asheville community. I know a lot of people think Asheville and cooperation don't always go together, but this was really a very, very harmonious process, and a very open and transparent process, too, and I really want to commend the city on that. It included, as Alan said, business owners, property owners, renters, residents, all kinds of folks, and we pretty much found a lot of consensus, as reflected in the survey, on three top priorities that this plan reflects. It's what we like about the Haywood Road corridor and want to keep and enhance. It's walkable, pedestrian-friendly, it's green, meaning environmentally healthy and attractive and sustainable, and we want to keep it that way. And the third community priority was historic preservation. We really want to emphasize adaptive reuse of our unique fabric of these century-old storefront structures. So, just walkable, green, historic, building blocks of the local economic renaissance is going on right now on Haywood Road, in a place that used to be called worst Asheville. We've come a long way, and they fit well with the sustainable priorities that are the basis of the city's comprehensive plan and its complete streets plan, and the historic master plan that's being developed, historic preservation plan. For now, I'll end there and urge you to pass this. I may have a little more to say about that during the informal discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? Okay, are there any other questions or comments before we vote on this item? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations. All right, the next item, under new business, is a resolution appointing members to the City-County African-American Heritage Commission, and the vice mayor will chair this item as well as the next.
Sure. Mayor, in early January, city council by ordinance created the City-County African-American Heritage Commission. It's a, was a long time in coming, unlike the Haywood Road Plan we just spoke of. Lot of interest in the community, very glad to have achieved that commission. We've taken, we took applications initially, I think we had about 24 or 28 applications for the three seats that we intend to appoint tonight. Two weeks ago, we narrowed the field down to six finalists, and we've done our interviewing, and we'll now choose from those six finalists, and how about if we start, Councilman Smith, on your end? Let's, each council member suggest the three candidates they prefer. We'll let Maggie keep track as we go, and we'll see where we end up after one passed through.
Are you ready, Maggie?
This is, again, all of these candidates are, we've got an exceptional crop of people who applied for this, and it's my hope that the folks who end up being seated can find a way to really incorporate all of this talent that came to-
a way to really incorporate all of this talent that came to us for this, and just real grateful for the efforts that's gone into getting it this far. I was looking for people with a depth of organizational experience and board experience, deep community network, and a real conversance with the history, and that's how I arrived at Mr. Hilton, Ms. Grant, and Mr. Chambers.
Marvin Chambers, Lamar Hilton, and Alfred Whitesides.
Mr. Chambers, Dr. Hilton, and Mr. Whitesides.
I have high hopes for this commission, and also would note that the county will have an opportunity to appoint three, and then the commission itself will appoint another three, so that applicants who have applied this time but may not be appointed by the city hopefully will get in under the remaining appointment possibilities. And this was a real challenge, because we had so many wonderful people apply for this commission. I have Ms. Goffney, I hope I said that right, Mr. Chambers, and Dr. Hilton.
Ditto in the comments. There are so many strengths from different people, but Chambers, Goffney, Hilton.
Chambers, Goffney, Hilton.
Goffney, Hilton, Whitesides.
We're gonna need a tabulation, Maggie.
Will your, Mr. Hilton, receive?
You're coming up with eight, right?
Whoops.
Yes.
Martha didn't vote, though.
I think everybody voted for Dr. Hilton. Is that right?
Mr. Chambers received six, and then Ms. Goffney received four.
You want to check and make sure there wasn't anyone else who received?
It's impossible.
Is that what you got as well?
I think that's correct.
Okay. That's impossible.
I think that's true.
Oh, okay. I just wasn't-
So, you know, a candidate needs to receive a majority of council, which is four, so I think we've settled it. Thank you, Maggie. The second commission to appoint to is the Historical Resources. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we need a motion for that?
We need a, I think the vote is sufficient.
Yeah, I think that was our voting.
It was seven. I apologize. It was no, Mr. Hilton, before I had it.
Do we need a formal motion beyond the vote we just did?
No.
Okay. That's what I thought. The second and final appointment is to the Historic Resources Commission. Two candidates applied and were considered. We'll start with this Councilwoman Whistler this time.
William Akins.
William Akins.
Akin.
Let's see. I would select Kinder Turner. I know we talked about her last-
William Akins. Akins.
Turner.
Five to two, I believe.
Mr. Akins.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry. Would you like to appoint the liaison to the African-American Heritage-
Oh, wait, yeah.
We would.
Shoot. I'd speak.
Nomination. Open for nominations.
I would nominate Councilwoman Pelly.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to second. This is probably an item that allows for public input. Would that be true?
No.
No? Why not?
Well, not, there is actually a law that requires that, but if you want, you could ask for that.
Public input on nomination, on appointment of a City Council liaison to the African-American Heritage Commission, seeing none. We have a motion to second, all in favor of Councilwoman Pelly.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pelly, for willingness.
All right. That concludes the new business. We do have a closed session tonight, and we will adjourn from the closed session, but before that, I have a number of folks that have signed up to speak under the public comment period, and then, of course, even if you didn't sign up, you're welcome. For those that have signed up to speak during the public comment period, you have three minutes to speak unless you have three others to yield their time to you, in which case you would have 10. The first speaker, and these sheets are numbered in order, is Mr. Mikalev.
Thank you. I'm sure I have three minutes. Unfortunately, with the constraints of a time limit, I feel I must be blunt, so I apologize for the tone of my message, but not for the message. Mayor Manheimer, Vice Mayor Hunt, City Manager Jackson, you're the ringleaders of this mess as it pertains to the Asheville Art Museum. You learned your lessons well from the likes of Representative Tim Moppet. That being, use whatever dirty trick and legal maneuver to get what you want for your friends, and if you can't get your way, just take the place. Paraphrasing from Gary Jackson's February 10th email. The council direction is to structure direct leases with the nonprofit tenants, and likewise to alter the role of the Pack Place Board. Under the direct lease arrangement, the city would become owner-manager of the building, replacing Pack Place in operation and management of the building. Did you do your due diligence and know exactly what is going on, what is going to cost you and the city in cash and in-kind to pull off this confiscation? Did you openly share this with the citizens of Asheville? The HBAC system, you appropriated $2 million of new tax money and a tax increase. Legally, you've hired a special attorney to deal with this matter. It's costing you at least $200 an hour, not budgeted, and you're likely using legal staff in-house. Additional capital costs of $818,200 has not been budgeted. Another one set on a tax increase, code compliance. You have no idea of the numerous complications of separating the building that this building entails. Just to mention a few, a second main entrance dealing with safety and handicap issues, disruption of the flow of pedestrian traffic, disruption of other members' space, separating portions of the electrical and mechanical systems, and encroachment into spaces of other members. Management. What about the operating costs of approximately $400,000 annually that the county currently provides? Mr. Jackson's email goes to nine city staff members. Is the council gonna be on each one of these boards? That's a significant in-kind commitment by the city that doesn't show up in any budget. Ka-ching, ka-ching, ka-ching. The fact is, I don't think a detailed due diligence has been done on this project in this taking. Direct leasing. I believe the council has been advised by the Art Museum that donors will not donate to the Art Museum if there's not a separate lease between the city and the Art Museum. Do you agree with-
Thank you, Mr. Mikalev.
Thank you.
The next person I have, and if you would like to provide your comments, I'm sorry, to the city clerk, she will pass them around to us. The second person I have signed up tonight is Mr. Mile. If you'll come forward.
Madam Mayor, if you'd excuse me, with council's permission, I would yield my time to Mr. Michael.
Well, under our rules, we're supposed to have three people yield their time to allow a person to speak for 10 minutes. Do we have others that would yield their time?
Uh-oh. And I defer.
The third person I have signed up is Mr. Rosenthal. I'm sorry, Jeannie Rosenthal, Ms. Rosenthal. I apologize. Go ahead.
Recently, I had a chance to come before the council to speak.
Just please state your name for the record.
Jeannie Rosenthal. Recently, I had a chance to speak before the council in regards to Partnership Property Management, which oversees, pretty much has a monopoly over all the low-income housing over a five-state territory, including Asheville, unfortunately. Mr. Rick Allen is the chief operating officer and one of the vice presidents of that company, and he's gotten into more newspapers, telling them how wonderful it is that the places have gone non-smoking, and he even invoked the good name of the fire department, saying now it'll be safer for them, too, when it's just the opposite. We've had electronic cigarettes that explode, and they're being allowed in the building now. And also, once you let that in the building, then the dry leaf cigarette smokers start smoking indoors also, when previously we had a non-smoking building. And of course, all of that adds to not safety in terms of fire. It was interesting, there's been a lot of things I've been learning recently about this whole topic. Partnership Property Management is based in Greensboro, North Carolina. It turns out, out of the three big tobacco companies, one of them, Lorillard, also is based in Greensboro, North Carolina. And it also turns out that Lorillard's making out really good on this. They are amongst all the big tobacco companies. They are the ones who have gotten the most involved in the electronic cigarette manufacture and sales. Apparently, they've been doing really good at it. It says that they've been the most aggressive in pursuing e-cigarettes, and they're up over 30% for the year, and they've been giving some of the biggest dividends, and they increased theirs, again, up to 55 cents a share, or 4.19% at the current stock price. So they're doing pretty good at this stuff, and whether or not they are working together to get this into the buildings, into their hands of poor people who are likely to smoke that, you know, who knows, but they're making out pretty good. And it turns out that Lorillard's done this in the past. Instead of telling people to quit, they tell them to switch to something that's supposedly safer. Back in, all the way back in the 1950s, when people were starting to learn about the cancer risk, Lorillard put out something for their Kent cigarettes called the Kent Micronite Filter, and this filter was supposed to filter out the bad stuff to where they wouldn't get cancer so much. Well, the filter turned out to have asbestos in it, and so a lot of people were getting mesothelioma and dying off really fast. And later on, it turned out that Lorillard knew what they were doing. And I believe that that's what we'll see with electronic cigarettes, too. Instead of getting people to quit, or preferably not even ever start to begin with, they're telling people to switch to a safer way of getting their nicotine fix. And we really need to put a stop to this. Other cities and localities have made sure that their rules regarding-
Thank you. The final speaker that I have signed up is the Reverend Lisa Landis.
Hello. I am Reverend Lisa Landis. It's very nice to see you. I'm glad that we have a lawyer who is now a mayor. I'm going to talk about moral duty, and to sum up moral, moral means not harming anybody. Malicious prosecution, wrongful imprisonment, wrongful conviction, police misconduct, failure to intervene, intentional infliction of emotional distress. I do have competent evidence for false claims, 31 U.S.C., 3729 to 3733. Public law, no person held accountable for a crime without adequate notice, that behavior is considered criminal. When I was acting as a citizen journalist, I was not informed of any criminal activity, yet I was arrested. 19, or I'm sorry, 1843 common law of North Carolina made it a criminal offense for one armed with an unusual and dangerous weapons to go upon public highways and thereby threats of murder caused terror to the people. The State versus Cole, which is one of the charges, is 2249 NC 733, 1959, upholding incitement to riot conviction of Ku Klux Klan leader who brandished weapons. I suffer from PTSD, and it has been about two years now trying to recover from the emotional distress caused by the statutory violations which caused irreparable damage. I am here to ask for a prayer for release. I request information for proper procedure of settlement without more prejudice for my socioeconomic or religious position. I am pro se. I have no attorney in the local area who wants to represent me because of their prejudice of this. Civil Code Section 3295, award of punitive and exemplary damages. Public service is the highest moral duty, and I feel that it is in the city's best interest to settle before the conspiracy to silence the voice of the people sets a precedence to get back public access for all cities. I hope that you will consider, and you will guide me as to what I need to go next in order to do this. It took me seven years to create glow-in-the-dark clothing. People told me it could not be done. That was before the internet. I have done a whole lot of research. I know my legal rights, and if I am required to continue pro se, I will do that. So what do I need to do next in order to have a prayer for relief?
I think we'll have to direct this one, since I'm not certain what you're speaking of exactly.
Yes, I think the simplest thing for us to do in this case is to get the contact information and allow our claims office to allow her to provide that information. We have a process to evaluate any claims brought against the city for damages.
So I am to go, because I had come here before, and it was your attorney had contacted my attorney, and I do not have an attorney. I am acting pro se. Do I come to your office?
No, actually, we'll contact you and provide the claim forms. You will not need to have legal representation in order to process a client.
So I can give you my email, and that would be sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have your phone number here. All right. That's the end of, that's the end of the speakers I have that have signed up. Is there anyone else wishing to go? Sure. Just please state your name for the record.
My name's Steve Rasmussen. I just want to speak now as an individual West Asheville citizen. While we've been working on that Vision Plan, the elephant in the room has been DOT's stubborn insistence on ballooning I-26 to eight to 10 lanes right through the heart of West Asheville, which would create an Atlantic-sized concrete canyon dividing the eastern from the western portion of Haywood Road and West Asheville in general. I want to point out that this overbuilt mega-project that Raleigh's seeking to bulldoze down Asheville's throat could violate every one of our Vision Plan's fundamental priorities by separating, polluting, and destroying a significant swath of our community. And DOT's outdated 20th-century traffic models and economic assumptions completely disregard and cut against the 21st-century sustainable economy and community that we're working so hard to build in West Asheville. It's indicative, and maybe a bad omen, that Harrison Construction is the company that, whose negligence caused that fuel oil spill into Hominy Creek in West Asheville. They're a branch of APAC, which is the paving giant, asphalt paving giant, that would most likely be the contractor on a project of that size. So I strongly urge City Council to oppose the I-26 widening proposal that the DOT is calling Section A. This is the eight-to-10 widening of, eight-to-10-lane widening of I-26. And I'm sure I don't need to remind you, but I will anyway, that one-third of Asheville's voters live in West Asheville, and we made our voice heard in last November's city election when the mayoral and council candidates who openly advocated for eight-laning West Asheville lost by landslides. So, thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. We have a closed-session motion. Take it away.
I move the Asheville City Council go into closed sessions for the following reasons: to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment of an individual public officer or employee. The statutory authorization is contained in GS 143-318.11A6, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential pursuant to GS 160A-168, the Personnel Privacy Act. The statutory authorization is contained in GS 143-318.11A1.
Second.
All right. And we will adjourn from the closed session. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. We are going to our closed session.